Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Tuesday, July 16, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, David Tatro. The following is a piece of legislation to be heard by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 1415. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, Zoning Map, and Article Three, Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter 907, Development Overlay Districts, Section 907.02, IPod, Interim Planning Overlay District. By adding a new section, 907.02.K, to establish a new interim planning overlay district, or the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Deb Gross. Thank you for listening and have a great day.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this cablecast public hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, July 16, 2019. I'm Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this afternoon's public hearing. We want to thank you in advance for being here. I am joined by Councilmembers Gross and Strasburger. I'm sure other members will be joining us shortly. We will begin by having the clerk read the purpose of the bill as to why we are gathered today, and then we'll have a brief presentation from our Planning Department and then go directly into your comment. Madam Clerk?
Bill 1415. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, Zoning Map, and Article Three, Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter 907, Development Overlay Districts, Section 907.02, IPod, Interim Planning Overlay District. By adding a new section, 907.02.K, to establish a new interim planning overlay district for the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District.
Hey, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record also reflect that we're joined by Councilwoman Harris and Andrew Dash. The floor is yours for your presentation. Thanks.
Andrew Dash, Assistant Director of Department of City Planning. We're here today to, this is the required City Council hearing for the interim planning overlay district six. What that is, is a temporary zoning control for a span of 18 months. It can be extended by an additional six months by City Council after it is approved by Council. And the intent of this ordinance is, you know, during that interim planning overlay district timeframe, to work on permanent zoning for inclusionary housing, inclusionary zoning that is informed by the pilot, as well as further study and further outreach. Recent interim planning overlay districts, you know, IPod four was completed in 2015, expired in 2017, and then the Riverfront, when we replaced that, both cases were replaced by permanent zoning. There have been a lot of changes to the city and its housing market, both in rent and, you know, and, you know, understanding where we have income restricted developments. You know, the recommendations for this interim planning overlay district came from the work of the city's Affordable Housing Task Force, which was created in 2016, which looked at and tried to understand the gap of affordable housing that we have here at the city. So roughly, you know, at the time, determined a gap of roughly 17,500 affordable units across the city. Looked at doing so in a number of ways. I won't get into those, but one of those ways was, was, you know, inclusionary zoning, which is what we're here for today. It is a tool that, you know, achieves that, you know, that intent of, you know, you know, for affordable housing and the creation of affordable housing by requiring new residential development to make a percentage of the units affordable to residents of a certain income level. After we concluded the work of the Affordable Housing Task Force, there was an additional committee that met in 2017, in the beginning of 2018, that looked specifically at this issue. I won't go into all of the details of that. We have incentive-based inclusionary zoning that exists both in the Uptown public realm and the Riverfront zoning district. The difference between that and this is that this would be mandatory in the pilot area, which is defined as the three neighborhoods of Lawrenceville. It's a community process with the Councilwoman's Office and Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation at the end of 2018, which led to the work. A lot of reasons why we chose Lawrenceville as a pilot, based on development activity and the change in rapid appreciation in prices. There are a number of, you know, developments that have gone on in the neighborhood. Again, the location of the pilot are the three Lawrenceville neighborhoods, Lower Lawrenceville, Central Lawrenceville, and Upper Lawrenceville. I'm going to scroll through to get to the Planning Commission, specifically, sorry, the, you know, this did go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did, you know, hear testimony. We did mail to 4,396 recipients, which are all the people within the three Lawrenceville neighborhoods, all property owners within three Lawrenceville neighborhoods, plus all properties within 150 feet of that boundary. You know, we did receive response rate from eight of those surveys. We also then had testimony that came to the Planning Commission by 43 community members. At that time, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to City Council that they approve the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District with the conditions that are listed there. And we'll close there.
Okay. Just a real quick question before we go into public comment. Your presentation is available via digital internet, correct?
Yes, it is. And we can, we can make sure that that's able to be posted online.
Yeah, would you please, and are you able to share where that might be found at this meeting?
I, we can put, what we can do is we can put it on the Department, we can put it on the Department of City Planning homepage, so PittsburghPA.gov/DCP.
That's perfect. And that way, anyone who wishes to go much more in-depth as to why we're gathered here today, you'll be able to do so.
Mr. President, I also attached that digital file to this hearing in Legistar, so that when people go to this hearing, they could see the complete set of slides.
And much, and much of this presentation was adapted from the presentation that we gave to the City's Planning Commission, which is also on the city's website.
So if the member of the public went to the date for that public hearing at Planning Commission, the Planning Commission public hearing, it will be there. And then also the City Council public hearing, it will be here. So it'll be, it sounds like three places that, all right, very good. Thank you.
Good, great. Thank you very much. Okay. So with that, we want to be respectful of your time. We appreciate that you've come to speak to the council today. So I am going to begin to go into our list of registered speakers. Just a couple of ground rules before we get started. When you come to the podium, we're going to ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside. We need that for our public record. The green light indicates the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time will have expired, and we'll call the next invited guest up to speak. So we will begin with David Brigan, I hope I said that correctly, David, right? Okay. As our first registered speaker, and you will be followed by Gary Phillip Nelson. Welcome, David. Thanks.
Thanks. Good afternoon. My name's Dave Brigan. I'm a Lawrenceville resident and the Executive Director of Lawrenceville United. Our mission is to improve and protect quality of life for all Lawrenceville residents. And I'm here today, hopefully for the last time, to express our strong support for Councilwoman Gross's Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District in Lawrenceville. Lawrenceville urgently needs this legislation, and Lawrenceville makes a lot of sense to pilot inclusionary zoning in Pittsburgh. Our crime rates have plummeted and made us the safest neighborhood in Zone Two. Our neighborhood public schools and transportation infrastructure are improving. The business district has taken off and brought local jobs and services to the community. Yet the benefits of revitalization have not been shared with everyone. Rising housing costs have priced out significant groups of our residents who stand to benefit from and helped bring about these positive changes. As just one measure, between 2011 and 2016, Lawrenceville lost over half of its housing choice voucher units in the neighborhood, representing the displacement of 120 low-income families and the greatest proportional loss of any city neighborhood. 300 Somali-Bantu immigrants who called Lawrenceville their first home in America have all been priced out of the neighborhood, largely getting pushed away from the resources they depend on in the city and to significantly less safe areas of Pittsburgh. And according to census figures, Lawrenceville lost nearly a third of its black population and a quarter of its longtime homeowners in just three years, while data shows that evictions are disproportionately being used against renting households with school-aged children. At the same time, Lawrenceville is currently undergoing its biggest housing boom in decades, with over 700 units in new multifamily residential development in recent years. Almost all of this housing is being created at the very top end of the market. Only 10 affordable units were created in the last decade by private developers in Lawrenceville. Had this inclusionary zoning legislation been in place five years ago, Lawrenceville would have created over 60 additional units of housing for the people most impacted by displacement. While it won't solve all of our housing issues in Lawrenceville, it can play a significant role. And with still lots of developable land in Lawrenceville, inclusionary zoning will continue to be relevant. Mandatory inclusionary zoning is an internationally tried and true tool to create quality affordable housing in areas of opportunity. And an incredible amount of expertise, feasibility studies, and community engagement went into the formation of this legislation, as demonstrated by the Planning Commission's unanimous approval. At the end of the day, though, this is about what kind of community we are planning for. Do we want to live in a city where revitalization means growing opportunities for some and inevitable exclusion for many of our neighbors? Or do we insist on a higher standard for development and growth in Pittsburgh? I strongly urge City Council to pass this legislation.
Thanks, David. Appreciate that. Hi, Gary, welcome. Celeste, you're here. I saw you. You'll be next, please. Hi, Gary, welcome.
Hi, I'm Gary Nelson. I live in Lawrenceville and I own rental property in Lawrenceville. I've been a City of Pittsburgh resident now since 2000. I am here to support, strongly support, passage of the proposed legislation. Inclusionary zoning is very important to what it is that made Lawrenceville an attractive location for my wife and me when we moved to the neighborhood and decided to invest in the neighborhood. We think diversity is critical to maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood. We think that we're already seeing, in ways that David mentioned, we're already seeing adverse impact of the decreasing amount of diversity in the neighborhood. I think that from a business perspective, when you drive down Butler Street, you see empty storefronts that are the result of longtime business renters being forced out because of rising rents, and also because there's a perception among landlords that there's a demographic change that's going to take place that's resulting in demanding more rent for those business locations and making it harder for them to rent them because the increase, the increases in the rent. A diverse neighborhood, on the other hand, would result in diverse business community as well. And I think that with passage of this legislation, it will give the City of Pittsburgh an opportunity to address a problem as well as experiment with solutions that will address the problem. I haven't taken my full three minutes. I hope you won't hold it against me. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you very much. Okay, Celeste, you're next, and you'll be followed by Brandon Mendoza.
I'm saying good morning, but I'm saying good afternoon. All right. Good afternoon. My name is Celeste Scott, and I'm the Housing Justice Organizer for Pittsburgh United. I live in Homestead, I used to live in Lawrenceville. Pittsburgh is at a critical moment. We have an opportunity to be a national leader, not just in terms of economic revival, but equitable development that puts people first. To be truly livable, the revitalization of Pittsburgh must include both the high-tech and the service sectors of the economy while lifting up every neighborhood in the city. Revitalization is benefiting some, but the fabric of low-income neighborhoods and communities of color are being torn apart. Creating and preserving housing affordability is a critical issue. In 2016, the City of Pittsburgh identified a shortage of affordable housing of over 20,000 units at the lowest incomes. We are currently in an affordable housing crisis in the City of Pittsburgh. As housing prices have increased across the city, many folks have been displaced from the neighborhoods they lived in for generations, and forced to live in neighborhoods, many times second and third ring suburbs like Duquesne and McKeesport, without access to amenities like transportation, healthcare, and healthy places to get groceries. I have personal experience with this. While I don't currently live in Lawrenceville, I used to, until I was priced out of the neighborhood. I now live in the borough of Homestead. Through my work at Pittsburgh United and our partnership with Lawrenceville United in their housing advocacy efforts, I've become reacquainted with the neighborhood of Lawrenceville, which is a great example of why affordability should be a part of any neighborhood improvement strategy. This policy being in place could have allowed my family to stay in the place we call home. Over the last 20 years or so, thousands of low-income, mostly black renters have been uprooted, and thousands of units of affordable housing have been demolished in the name of creating mixed-income communities. Examples are Alakweta Terrace Hope Six, Manchester Hope Six, Bedford Hill Hope Six, Federal American Properties, Third East Hills, Garfield Heights, Addison Terrace, East Liberty Gardens, Allegheny Dwellings. And this list only includes mixed-income redevelopment. It doesn't include demolition, elimination of affordable housing, like Broadhead Manor, where I'm from, Westgate Village, and St. Clair Village. Raising our development standard by including a small percentage of affordable units in luxury housing development pales in comparison to the burden that the city has inflicted on thousands of rental households in the name of creating mixed-income communities. If this city really values mixed-income communities, and I think we do, and equitable development, then everyone should share the burden of creating mixed-income housing. Otherwise, it's just willful displacement strategies that the city is using to displace thousands of black tenants and destroy thousands of units of affordable housing. Please do the right thing and pass the IPod legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Good.
Thank you.
Hi, Brandon, welcome. You'll be followed by Corey Reese. I hope I said that correct. Welcome.
All right, thanks, you. Thank you. Dear Members of Council, my name is Brandon Mendoza. I'm the Executive Director of NAOP Pittsburgh at the Commercial Real Estate Association. I have an office in the South Hills. We also have an office in Market Square. We have nearly 400 members in Pittsburgh, and our National Association, which we are part of, has over 20,000 members across the US. I want to thank you for the opportunity to offer remarks on this policy. While citizens may not, may not always agree on policy options, we should not take for granted the ability to speak freely on issues that impact our communities and neighborhoods. As many of you know, I and the constituencies I represent at NAOP have some serious apprehensions about this policy, not because we don't acknowledge the importance of affordable housing, we do, but because there are better ways to produce affordable units than this policy. The policy as written is a hurdle to development when it does not have to be. We should be seeking to use some carrots or incentives to stimulate affordable, like, development, as opposed to sticks or hurdles. So just last month, we brought in a renowned urbanist and economist and a housing expert from Portland by the name of Joe at Courtrite. Joe has done extensive research on urban economies and affordable housing in a nonpartisan, like, fashion. His research, his research on affordable housing is clear. 21st century cities should prepare policies to support affordable housing. So you guys are right about trying to do that. But on inclusionary zoning, you know, he's very clear. We should not make the goals of affordable housing a discussion about market rate versus affordable rates. Instead, what he, what he says is that we should use market signals to try to incentivize more affordable units. For example, you know, he's, he's recommended a tax increment, like, financing strategy that has been successful in Portland and several other cities. For example, in Portland and New York. Well, New York has an inclusionary, like, policy in all, like, five, like, boroughs. In the same, like, time period, the folks in Portland have produced more affordable units in their Pearl District with a TIF strategy than all five, like, boroughs of New York have produced with their inclusionary zoning strategy. Again, you know, I'm not here to just be against the legislation. I would love to work with you guys to make it better and to also look at other strategies to increase affordable units.
Okay, Brandon, thank you very much. Corey, you're in line, followed by Yvonne Francine Brown, who I don't see. So Corey, you'll be followed by Nicole Penberg. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Corey Ritchie. I'm a Lawrenceville resident. I've been a City of Pittsburgh resident for about 10 years now. I'm speaking a little earlier than I planned to, so a little more oving statement than closing argument, like I intended, but I do need to respond to that a little bit. Those of us who are here, we're actually kind of fighting for our home. This is where we live. This is where the people we know live, and we want to keep it the way, the way it is. We want to make it better. We don't want to keep losing the people that we love. And while, yes, I understand that there may even be some better ideas than inclusionary zoning that might create more, the point is, we're not done after today. This is the start. This is what people have been working for, and because we want it. We want it for ourselves. We understand there's other people in other parts of the city that want it too. We want to show that it works so they can get it too, but they have to ask for it. We're not trying to impose this on anyone else. This is our neighborhood, and this is what we want. And yes, I understand that, again, the developers may prefer another method, but I've been to two different community meetings in the past couple of months, where developers have come, since this has been introduced, and they've been ready to, they understand it, they've been ready to go, they understand how many units they need to make, they have plans for it, and they're ready to do it. Saying this isn't feasible, saying this won't work, is just nonsense. It's possible that we can do more. It's possible that we can do better in the future, but that's not a reason to not do this. We are losing people. We are losing our community right now, and honestly, we're sick of it. If, if you guys won't help us, we're going to have to find something else. But right now, again, this is a fantastic idea, and I just beg you guys to, you know, support this. Thank you.
Good, Corey. Thank you. Nicole, are you with us today?
Yes.
Okay, you're next, please, and you'll be followed by Chad Irvin. Welcome, Nicole. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you. Do I start this myself?
No, we'll start it.
Thank you. Last name is Penberg, with a B. I've been a 10th Ward resident and homeowner since 2005. I bought my home for $50,000 with no money down, which was exactly what I could afford as a social service worker, a drug and alcohol counselor, married to an artist. My neighbors at the time, many of them still are, but I was surrounded by veterans, refugees, families of color, folks on disability, blue and pink collar, working-class families. And I know I couldn't afford to live in my house or in my neighborhood if I had to move there now, and I don't think many of my neighbors could. They were lucky enough, and I was lucky enough to be able to move in at a time when affordable housing was the norm. And I met, over the few years after I moved in, lots of people who also took advantage of affordable housing in Lawrenceville. And the diversity in the neighborhood and the people that I met and the close-knit character of the neighborhood has been amazing. I don't know my neighbors anymore. I don't know the people that are moving in. I don't know the people that live near me anymore. And the people that I did know that moved in for opportunities have all left. They've left because they've been forced out, they've been priced out, they saw an opportunity to sell their house and make some money and take it elsewhere. The reality is, back when I moved in in 2015, the 10th Ward, the 10th Ward's biggest issue was that we didn't have a business district that was thriving the way it was in central or lower Lawrenceville. We wanted restaurants. We wanted shops. But apparently, we didn't want restaurant workers. And we wanted shops, but we don't want shopkeepers. And we want art, but we don't want artists, because my friends and the people that I know that work in these careers can't afford to live in Lawrenceville anymore. So Lawrenceville wants what they have to provide and wants to take their service, but doesn't want to provide anything in return. I think we're well overdue for affordable housing. This is a really small step, and it's the least we can do right now. I encourage us to move forward with this and then find additional ways to keep affordable housing in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good. Good, Nicole. Chad, are you with us? Okay. Then our next speaker will be Nancy Gippert. Hi, Nancy, welcome, followed by Mary Jade Kramer. Hi, Nancy.
Hi. Good morning. My name, afternoon, sorry. My name is Nancy Gippert. I live at 22246th Street. I lived in Pittsburgh a long time ago, then moved to Harrisburg and moved back as soon as I retired about five years ago. I landed in Lawrenceville. I am strongly in support of inclusionary zoning. I moved in just in time, because if I was trying to buy my house now, I couldn't afford it, and that was just five years ago. Lawrenceville is a great place to live, and I want us to maintain that sense of an inclusive neighborhood that has always existed here. We don't want Lawrenceville to turn into a giant gated community for the upper 10%. I live on this great little street with cottage-like houses resting on a steep hill across the street from a park. There is not a single child on my street. Longtime families are moving out. Renters are moving out because they can't keep up with the rent. As Dave pointed out, evictions are high, and it's families with children who are being evicted, and there is no housing for those families to move into. And it's fine that all my new neighbors are young singles or couples, but we also need housing to be development, to be development, developed that can be afforded by families. Inclusionary zoning is one tool to help bring kids back to our neighborhood. This is a policy that's been effective in other neighborhoods in other cities, and I urge you to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy. You did good. Mandy, are you with us? Okay. Lori Bonnet?
Ms. John Brady?
No, Mandy Jade Kramer. How about Lori Bonnet? Yes? No? Helen Gerhart, I don't think I see her here. Oh, you are. Okay. Hi, Helen, welcome. You'll be followed by Katie Phillips. Thanks, Helen.
I'm Helen Gerhart. I live at 7447 Penfield Court in North Point Breeze of Pittsburgh. Just Harvest and the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council are pleased to testify in support for the inclusionary IPod in Lawrenceville, introduced by Councilwoman Gross. Just Harvest works with many partners across Allegheny County to address hunger at its root, economic injustice, through a focus on public policy, food access, and community power. Currently, rising housing costs are not only directly eating into the food budgets of low-income people across our region, they have also been displacing many thousands of lower-income people out of Pittsburgh. Such displacement into the ring suburbs means that many low-income residents no longer have access to healthy food or adequate public transit to get to such food, as well as to jobs, healthcare, and many other critical needs. Unequal access to housing in neighborhoods of opportunity is both an economic justice issue and an ongoing failure of city and county to meet their civil rights obligations to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Housing in Pittsburgh and Allegheny County remains largely segregated, with persons of color, people with disabilities, families with children, and others that should be protected by applicable fair housing laws, generally having many fewer choices and less access to critical needs. The impacts of displacement are myriad, from inferior access to educational and employment opportunities to far poorer health outcomes. Just Harvest is among several organizations partnering with the Allegheny County Health Department in a Center for Disease Controlled Funded Initiative to assess and address racial health inequities in Allegheny County. Access to nutritious food is widely understood as a key factor in such adverse health outcomes as heart disease, diabetes, and infant mortality. By increasing neighborhood diversity by race and income, inclusionary zoning can be a powerful force in maintaining access to nutritious food. This zoning tool is just one important component of a city strategy to ensure equitable food access. We strongly encourage the Planning Commission and City Council to approve this measure as a means to protect the public's health, especially among those at risk of displacement into food deserts. While this IPod... While this iPod legislation only affects Lawrenceville, mandatory inclusionary zoning is something that was recommended citywide by the Affordable Housing Task Force and the Inclusionary Housing and Incentive Zoning Exploratory Committee, as well as the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force. This iPod is an important first step in realizing those recommendations. With clear evidence of stress and damage through displacement in Lawrenceville's hot housing market, please move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Helen. Ed, are you here? Ed Nussar?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, Ed. Come on up. Where did I? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss Katie Phillips? Forgive me if I did. Katie, I'm sorry. So Katie, you're next, and then you're followed by Ed Nussar. Forgive me. Yep, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I've completed all of them, okay?
Good afternoon, members of City Council. My name is Katie Phillips, and I live in Perry Hill Top, and I'm the Advocacy and Public Policy Coordinator at PUMP. PUMP is a nonprofit whose mission is to make Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh region, the most dynamic and diverse place by engaging, educating, and mobilizing all young people to create change in our community. Each year, we serve nearly 30,000 people, primarily under the age of 40. I'm here today to ask that you vote in favor of the Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District. PUMP's advocacy and public policy agenda, which was developed through a year-long community process, is our collective vision for equity in the Pittsburgh region. We support diverse, inclusive, affordable neighborhoods and access to high-quality education and workforce development for all. We have worked to advance these goals as a member of the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force for the City of Pittsburgh and through our support of the proposed inclusionary zoning policy. Inclusionary zoning is just one tool in the toolbox needed to address the affordable housing crisis in Pittsburgh, but the legislation before you today is unique. Not only is it good policy, but it is policy that was homegrown and driven by the community. As you have heard and will continue to hear today, this legislation has the overwhelming support of the community. This legislation is an opportunity to listen to, honor, and defend the people of Lawrenceville. We would like to commend Councilwoman Gross and the Department of City Planning for their thoughtful approach to this legislation. We'd also like to thank community organizations, including the City of Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Task Force, the Inclusionary Housing and Incentive Zoning Exploratory Committee, Lawrenceville United, and Lawrenceville Corporation for their leadership, as well as Pittsburgh City Planning Commission for their unanimous recommendation of this legislation. And most importantly, we would like to thank all of the community members who have worked so hard to keep Lawrenceville and Pittsburgh home. Members of City Council, on behalf of PUMP, we hope you will take this opportunity to vote in favor of this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's great. Hey, Ed. Okay, Ed, welcome. You're next, followed by Jackie Smith. Welcome.
Councilmembers, thank you for your time today. My name's Ed Nussar. I'm the Director of Real Estate for City of Bridges Community Land Trust. We're located at 143rd Street in Lawrenceville. I'm here today to strongly, strongly encourage you and to echo my partners and colleagues who've come before me to pass this legislation. This is legislation that is desperately needed for the neighborhood of Lawrenceville and for the City of Pittsburgh. And I think importantly, Assistant Director Dash touched on this during his presentation, it can't be lost and shouldn't be lost, that the legislation in front of you is the work, is the product of two and a half years of work. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Inclusionary Zoning Exploratory Committee that met almost beginning two years ago, over the course of eight months, to look at these questions, to look at questions of incentives and hurdles, to look at how we still get the housing that our neighborhoods and our residents need. That committee did phenomenal work over eight months, was represented by three for-profit developers, two lenders, one nonprofit developer, various CDC and other grassroots representatives. That was a broad swath of individuals on that committee that helped develop the policy recommendations that became Councilwoman Gross's iPod legislation. And that committee did not agree on everything, but it came to a consensus. And what that committee found was that inclusionary zoning is both necessary and economically feasible in the City of Pittsburgh, not just in Lawrenceville, in the City of Pittsburgh. And I think to take some time quickly to touch on some things we've heard earlier, the people who want, who will benefit from incentives always want to see incentives. That's just how incentives work. But what we have seen time and time again across the country is that inclusionary zoning, like the legislation before you, works. In Washington, DC, IZ was introduced in 2009. In 2017, a City Lab analysis showed that applications for housing permits increased every single year from the adoption of an inclusionary zoning policy. The National Housing Conference Center for Housing Policy found the most highly, quote, "most highly regarded empirical evidence suggests that inclusionary housing can produce affordable housing units and does not lead to significant declines in overall housing production or to increases in market rate prices." And if you want to talk about the benefit or anticipated benefit of incentives, you can look at San Diego, which implemented a whole swath of these supply-side ideas, reducing parking requirements, increasing density bonuses, increasing height bonuses. And what San Diego has seen over the time that those policies have been in place without inclusionary zoning is a 60% spike in unsheltered homeless populations in downtown San Diego and more affordable housing units demolished than created.
Thanks, Ed. Hi, Jackie, welcome. You will be followed by Jesse Perkins. Thanks for coming down.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackie Smith. I'm in the Park Place neighborhood in Pittsburgh. I'm a sociologist at the University of Pittsburgh, and I volunteer with the Human Rights City Alliance here in the city. And I want to remind us that our conversation today is really addressing what is a global housing crisis. What we see here is something that cities around the world are experiencing, and this is linked to the growth and concentration of the global financial industry, which has distorted our democratic processes and really undermined the feedback mechanisms that government needs to know what communities need and how to address community problems. So we have a broken system that we're trying to address here, and this legislation could be one small step in moving us in the right direction. In response to this global housing crisis, global leaders are calling for a fundamental paradigm shift, where housing is treated as a human right and not as a commodity. We need to subordinate markets to human needs, and I think all the evidence we're hearing today illustrates why that's the case. And earlier this month, I delivered to your offices a copy of a letter that was written by the United Nations Special Rapporteur on the right to housing. I have additional copies here for you. But the Special Rapporteur, Leilani Farha, pointed out to heads of government, including the Trump administration, specific areas where improvements are needed to address international legal obligations that governments have to respect human rights. First, financial supports and tax breaks encourage institutional investment in housing and undermine governments' responsibility under international law to ensure access to adequate housing for the most vulnerable populations. Second, she criticized government's failure to enact legislation to ensure adequate supplies of affordable housing, such as rent control and policies linking housing prices with minimum wage regulations. And finally, she criticized the disproportionate impacts on African-American households, which contradicts government obligations under the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination. So I urge you to move forward this legislation as just the first step in helping recognize the human right to housing in Pittsburgh. And I'll remind you that Pittsburgh, this council passed a proclamation to make Pittsburgh a human rights city in 2011, and this would be evidence that you're committed to that principle and that designation. Thank you.
Okay, Jesse, thank you. Thank you very much. Jesse is with us. Jesse, you'll be followed by James Sargent. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Jesse Perkins. I've been a City of Pittsburgh resident for my entire life and now live in Lawrenceville. When I bought my home in 2013, you could still find properties there for less than $50,000. It took me three years, and I was able to fully gut and renovate my house, and I'm so proud to call Lawrenceville my home. But while I worked, Lawrenceville's housing market shifted. The opportunities that used to be available have grown out of reach for many of the people that grew up in the community. Folks that stuck it out through the rougher times are now having trouble figuring out how to stay in the neighborhood they've lived in their whole lives, and more market rate developments are not helping them. This legislation helps provide one way to protect the people that make our neighborhoods so wonderful. Please help us keep Lawrenceville a neighborhood for everybody. Please use your power to support this inclusionary zoning legislation. Thank you.
Okay, Jesse, thank you. Mr. Sargent is here. Hey, hi, how are you? And you're followed by Marlene Van Es, I believe? I hope I said that right? Okay. Okay.
My name is Randy Sargent. I live in South Oakland, excuse me, at 3634 Frazier Street. I'm a researcher at Carnegie Mellon University, and together with fellow residents Tyreek Williams and Ann Wright, who are also in this room today, we founded and run an after-school technology and arts program in South Oakland, serving a 95% black population of kids in our neighborhood. Over recent decades, as rents have gone up faster than incomes of our residents, we in Oakland have lost 40% of our black population, 1,600 people. In the past three years, as I've been helping run our after-school program, I've seen six families of our kids lose their housing, all families of color. I've watched our families desperately try to find alternative housing in South Oakland but be unable to find anything in their price range. I've seen our evicted kids and parents become homeless and be broken up. I've watched possessions on the curb get thrown in the trash because the families had no place to bring them. I've watched our families displaced to neighborhoods away from public transit and away from many of the opportunities of their childhood home. I learned that one of our very promising teens that I mentored up until his family was displaced two years ago, guess this past month, was committed to juvenile detention. And I keep reviewing in my head, how could that have gone differently? Was there a way that we could have prevented his displacement and his being disconnected from his friends, his support network, and the opportunities of our neighborhood? I'm very grateful for all the effort of the people in this room today to develop the proposed inclusionary zoning overlay, and I strongly support it, as you might guess. And I look forward to the day when we might be able to use the same or similar tool in Oakland to prevent the displacement of our kids and families. Thanks.
Randy, thank you. Hi, Marlene, welcome. You'll be followed by Elizabeth Reiners.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Marlene Van Es, and I reside at 5163 Natrona Way in Upper Lawrenceville, and I own a business in Lower Lawrenceville. I am strongly in support of this inclusionary zoning measure. It is important that as Pittsburgh grows and changes, we make sure everyone is included in that growth. Pittsburgh has to change its history of how it approaches developing, pushing people out who have built and held a community for years in order to gentrify. We have to value people who lived in Lawrenceville and called it home before development and make sure that they can afford to stay there. It not only shows that we value our citizens who have held Pittsburgh together through good times and bad, but that we want them to continue to be part of the Pittsburgh of tomorrow. Inclusionary zoning also supports diversity. Diversity is central to a healthy and vibrant community, and we cannot overlook the role that market rate development plays in impacting diversity. I want my community to be full of different socioeconomic groups, races, religions, and accessible to everyone. We know that there are systems in place that make that less feasible, and this is one drop in the bucket that can help fight against our growth benefiting only a few. And I hope this is just the beginning of further efforts throughout this city. Thomas Jefferson, although with his own issues with equality, said that "the care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only object of good government." It is our role, it is the role of our government to make sure that Pittsburgh is not the most livable city for some, but for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good speakers. Elizabeth, are you here? You are? Good, thank you. Come on down. And Alan Lewandowski, forgive me. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name is Beth Reiners, and I live in Lawrenceville. I've lived there for 19 years, and I want to make it clear before I say anything else, I chose that neighborhood. I wanted to live there. I didn't just happen to move to Lawrenceville. I picked it. And I picked it because I loved the neighborhood, I loved the diversity, I loved everything about it. And lately, these developers have been coming, and they're taking away everything that makes our neighborhood special. They're taking away our historic housing stock. They're taking away our green space. They're taking away our long-term residence, our parking. They're taking away our diversity. And, you know, they're obviously making a lot of money, and when we ask them what we get in return, they say, "Well, we're a lot better than what was here before, right?" Every single one of them says that. And I look around, and I was there before. My friends were there before. The businesses that I loved to frequent were there before, and they're gone. They're just, and they get money, and I get, "Well, we're better than everything that you loved." And I just, I just don't think it's too much to ask them to give us something in return. And what, 10% of new housing to be affordable? That's it? Like, that's, that's not so much to ask for everything that we're giving up so they can make money. Thank you.
Mr. Lewandowski, are you here? You are. Welcome. And Kyle Weber, you'll be next.
I'm Alan Lewandowski. I live on 44th Street. In 2003, I was lucky enough to find an affordable house. A lot of my friends also moved in around that time. Since that time, almost every single one of my people I know has moved out. Other people, I was lucky. I was able to buy a house for $30,000. Other people had to rent. So it turns out that the people who were already vulnerable have become increasingly vulnerable. Well, you know, the people, developers, who their main, the way they have access to these opportunities is by having a lot of resources, and that they get the opportunity, not by being better people, but only because they have access to the resources, to replace the increasingly vulnerable with people who are increasingly in a glee of gentrification, enjoying a neighborhood that, you know, the people we know and love, as Beth said, you know, can't afford to live there anymore. I believe it's, you know, our city's responsibility, and I really thank Deb and Councilwoman Gross and everybody else, Pittsburgh United, Lawrenceville United, for doing this great work, you know? You know? Thank you. Because we do have a responsibility to temper the free-for-all of development, you know, to make sure that we protect the vulnerable and to make sure that we're not here to serve development. Development should be here to serve our whole city. And I used to have a worry that Pittsburgh was becoming a place of two cities, you know, the affluent stratified with the working class being pushed further down. I'm learning now that it's becoming one affluent city slowly, as people that I know have moved to Swissville, Wilkinsburg, Penn Hills, you know, they are no longer residents of Pittsburgh, you know? So please, I strongly support the mandatory inclusionary zoning, and thank you all for making this happen.
Thank you, Alan. Hi, Kyle, welcome. You'll be followed by Jenna Date.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kyle Webster. I'm here today in two capacities. I'm a Lawrenceville resident and homeowner. My husband and I bought our house in Lawrenceville back in 2014. I'm also General Counsel of Action Housing, the largest affordable housing nonprofit developer in Western Pennsylvania. I'm going to mostly speak in that capacity because I feel it's important for me to speak as a developer. Action Housing, as a developer, is absolutely in favor of this passing. The draft bill, as it reads, is not perfect, but it is such an important tool in the affordable housing tool chest, and really, what bill is perfect? Action Housing would like to encourage you to pass this, and then we can work to perfect it. Also, for those developers who are struggling to figure out how to make this work, I invite meetings with Action Housing. We have 62-plus years of successfully navigating the affordable housing landscape of Pittsburgh and the surrounding area, and we can help you learn how to do simple things like an income verification, how to market to low-income populations, and how to successfully run a fully-integrated mixed-use building that stands as an asset to the mixed-income reality of all Pittsburgh neighborhoods. When we talk to our partner agents- wish it had been implemented 10 years earlier. Arguably, we should have had this conversation at a point before today. But we have so much development and growth ahead of us that even if you think this won't have an impact on Marshall Shadland, or Carrick, or Perry Hilltop, in 10 years, we may find ourselves grateful in a way these other cities can't. So I really want to encourage you to do this, and I want to tell you, it is very possible to make affordable housing in Pittsburgh happen, but it takes a lot of approaches. This is one of many. Let's not stop here, but let's make sure we get past this one. Thank you.
Jenna, are you here with us? Okay. How about Darrell Kinsel? There you are. Darrell, welcome. Okay. And you'll be followed by Marcia Rapczak. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Darrell Kinsel. I'm a former resident of Lawrenceville, current resident of Garfield. I also serve as the Community Engagement and Program Manager for Lawrenceville United. Today, I wanted to speak about the community processes that we did around IZ in Lawrenceville. Across the country, almost 900 jurisdictions have inclusionary housing, and research shows that these programs are effective in preventing displacement. In some places in the country, inclusionary zoning is responsible for creating over half of the local affordable housing supply. For these reasons and more, IZ was one of the key recommendations that came out of the city's Affordable Housing Task Force. An exploratory committee of various local stakeholders showed broad consensus for a mandatory IZ program in Pittsburgh, as well as the feasibility of a 10% set us out for affordable housing projects above 20 units. The lack of affordable housing in Lawrenceville is truly a crisis. In our office, weekly, we routinely hear of residents who are facing increased rents, or even worse, evictions, and are no longer able to find suitable housing in the community they've called home for years. In a survey we did last year about how to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity in the neighborhood, affordable housing was by far the number-one issue that residents identified to build a welcoming community for all. Lawrenceville needs this policy. It's why Lawrenceville United volunteered to be a part of the pilot area for the city's implementation of IZ. In the fall of 2018, with the Department of City Planning, Councilwoman Gross's office, and Lawrenceville Corporation, we led an extremely aggressive community engagement process that included three public community meetings. Now, these meetings covered the state of housing and displacement in the neighborhood, and how IZ would work to address the needs of Lawrenceville. Every single home across the 6th, 9th, and 10th wards received a mailing inviting residents to these meetings, among many other outreach efforts that we've documented and are prepared to share with city council today. Over the course of the meeting, well over 100 people participated and provided input. Attendees asked tough questions and showed widespread support for IZ in Lawrenceville. The support of this policy in Lawrenceville is further demonstrated by a petition we began that has garnered over 1,100 signatures, a jam-packed room at planning commission full of everyday citizens, carpooling, carrying signs, and taking off work to show their support for IZ. We've also been intentional about creating a process and a policy that other neighborhoods in Pittsburgh can adapt, which is why we're deliberate in including housing and community development organizations from across the city in these discussions. We're also proud to have letters from over 20 organizations here today who are in support of this legislation. In closing, city council should be assured that great care has gone into this policy, and it has the support of not only Lawrenceville, but also the greater Pittsburgh community. We urge you to recommend this legislation. Thank you.
Thanks, Darrell. Okay. You'll be followed by Alex Levy.
Thank you. My name is Marcia Rapczak. I'm in the 10th ward. I bought my house six years ago. So thank you, city council members. Thank you to everyone who worked on this policy as well, this proposal. It's a great thing. I strongly support it. So when I bought my house, I had a librarian's income, which is a middle-class income. And so buying the house was a stretch, but I could do it. And now, there are houses that are two times as much as my house, three times as much as my house, four times as much as my house, four and a half times as much as my house. So it's getting to the point where I certainly couldn't buy a house in Lawrenceville anymore. And not only that, my neighborhood is changing. Just in those six years, it's becoming more homogeneous. There are people being displaced, and it's really changing. It looks, it looks very, very different, but also very much all the same. And so I think if we want to tout that Pittsburgh is a livable city, if we want to say that, "Oh, this is the most livable city," we need to take care of our neighborhoods that are actually in the city and have legislation that supports inclusionary housing so that we can have a place that's livable for everyone, not just the wealthy and the white. So I strongly encourage you to support this bill. Thank you.
Okay, Marcia, thank you. Alex, you're here. Thank you. Loretta Millender, you'll be next. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Alex Levy. I am a former resident of Lawrenceville and 10-year resident of Bloomfield and research analyst at the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group in the Hill District. PCRG is a member-based organization primarily of community development corporations and nonprofits from the city and the inner-ring suburbs. And we are so proud to stand here today with our friends, our members, and other Lawrenceville residents to strongly support Councilwoman Gross's IZ overlay pilot. Community development and the community development corporation and model was created out of crisis. It was built to stem decline. It was about capital and resources going to communities and individuals that were left behind by deindustrialization, white flight, redlining, urban renewal, and other city-killing actions. We've been somewhat successful in this. Certain places have rebounded, but the human consequences, many unforeseen, have been equally devastating. This was never supposed to be our vision. We need to rethink community development's purpose. What is the role of, what is the role of community development in hot markets, especially in a city where disinvestment is occurring right alongside runaway markets? We need to move from stemming decline to harnessing growth equitably. Pittsburgh has learned the hard way. No community, no neighborhood is ever truly done. Once a community becomes a vibrant neighborhood of choice, what do we do next? That's when new tools come into play. And those in the nonprofit and public sector need to have the right ones to bring the person along with the neighborhood. For example, inclusionary zoning, land trusts, land banking, mixed-use zoning, and upzoning. IZ is not a panacea, but we owe it to those who were there during the times that Lawrenceville was down on their luck to bring them along when Lawrenceville is doing well. Our job is to understand the system and advocate for how the system can change. We believe the inclusionary zoning pilot is one small step to making this happen. We thank everyone who spoke, and we thank Councilwoman Gross for her leadership. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Alex. Hi, Loretta, welcome. Jude Vecan will be next.
My name is Loretta Millender. They call me the Bible of Lawrenceville because I know it. I've been there 77 years, living in Lawrenceville. We bought a home 20-some years ago on 5th Street, 2205th. Beautiful place. The reason I'm here today is Lawrenceville has changed so much in 70-some years due to the fact 80% of the people there now are white. 10% is black, 10% is another color. The problem that we have today with this housing, we need affordable housing. This will take and let every person that wants to buy a house down there be able to live in Lawrenceville. Bring the community back like it was, where I could look outdoor, my neighbor was white, my other neighbor was Polish, someone else was Afro-American. Our children played together. They went to school together. We do not need an all-white school or all-black school. We do not need an all-white neighborhood or all-black neighborhood. We need to live in America, mix, together, being friends, loving one another. We wouldn't have this hate. If city council will pass this, give us affordable housing, watch how people will start changing. The old will learn from the new. The young will learn from the old. You need to do this and help us. If you're sitting down here as our city council, we need your support and your help to pass this. Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. Great. Standing ovation. Jude, are you here? Okay, great. You're followed by Robert Damewood. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I feel emotional. Losses, that's what I'm feeling. It's about losses. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh and have lived here all but seven of my 54 years. I love Pittsburgh, though that love has been tested and seems to be tested more and more these days. Pittsburgh has, excuse me, Pittsburgh has, to some extent, lived up to its title as most livable city, relative to other large cities, relative. That's been changing rapidly these past few years, and I've been grieving those losses. I have a paragraph about me, and I'm going to make it super short because it doesn't really matter to me right now, but I, at 45, was able to buy a house in Lawrenceville. I left last year. And I have more choices than a lot of people. But I chose to leave, and I'm sad about that. We tried to fight to have more humane development in the neighborhood, and we lost a lot of battles. And I moved to Lawrenceville in large part because it was such an engaged community. I was a librarian, and I saw what people did to hold on to that library branch when it was threatened, for example. It's a relatively engaged community, and we still had major, major losses. So we can't leave it up to the developers. They never do it. And we can't keep coming to these meetings. How much energy does it take to have you protect very basic human rights, like we need clean air, we need clean water, we need places to live, and we need food? Air, water, food, housing. It's human beings we're talking about here. It's a no-brainer. So so many intelligent and passionate arguments here today. How many people and how many months have so many other people, you know, I have done this much, been spending their energy and their care and their time unpaid? I don't, we're not, look at these people. We're not, we don't have money to give up paid labor. I gave up teaching time. I don't really care about my notes. We need legislation. We need regulations. We need structures. I left selling my house to the Lawrenceville Community Land Trust, and that eased a lot of my pain about leaving the neighborhood because I felt I could feel good about it. Do it.
Thanks, Jude. Really good speakers today. Robert, welcome. You'll be followed by Joanna Demming. And Joanna, we'll get a microphone to you, okay?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Bob Damewood. I'm a staff attorney with Regional Housing Legal Services. I live in Mount Washington and I work downtown. RHLS represents nonprofit developers, like Action Housing, who testified today, like the Lawrenceville Community Land Trust. We have assisted in the completion of a billion dollars' worth of development projects throughout the Commonwealth, and we strongly support Councilwoman Gross's proposed Lawrenceville IZ interim planning overlay district. I'd like to make a couple clarifications, you know, about things that were said earlier. For one thing, the housing needs assessment commissioned by the city that Malin Lonergan did identified a gap of 19,957 affordable units, units that are affordable to people earning half of the city median income or below, not 17,000. Also, Mr. Mendoza mentioned, you know, first of all, his preference for incentive-based models, but also New York City's poor performance in their IZ program. What he didn't mention is that their IZ program is incentive-based. It's based on density bonuses and height bonuses. So if you're going to look at how effective inclusionary zoning programs are, you know, please look at something like Montgomery County, Maryland, that's been at it for decades and has produced thousands of affordable units. You know, secondly, it really isn't just about production, it's also about what kind of communities do we want to live in, right? It's about creating and preserving mixed-income communities, as so many people have testified here today. And as Celeste testified, you know, I mean, city policies have displaced a whole lot of low-income, particularly African-American families in the name of creating mixed-income communities. And this is, you know, literally the least we can do, is a 10% mandatory inclusionary affordability requirement. Finally, Ed Neuser mentioned the IZ Working Group. I also served on that working group, or that committee. The committee included a housing calculator working group that was charged with reality testing IZ in the city of Pittsburgh. Looked at, it tested various IZ requirements based on actual development and operating costs and on the minimum rate of return necessary to attract private investment in the city of Pittsburgh. The working group determined that with a full LRTA tax abatement, a 10% set aside for households earning 50% of AMI, area median income, citywide, would be feasible, with 15% feasible in strong-market neighborhoods. Now, Lawrenceville is one of the strongest market neighborhoods we have. So this requirement is actually a conservative requirement, and it's well within the feasibility findings and recommendations of the IZ Exploratory Committee. With that, I just want to thank you and urge you to vote in favor of this legislation.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate you being here. Hi, Joanna, welcome. We're going to get a microphone to you.
My name is Joanna Demming. I'm the Executive Director for Fineview and Perry Hilltop Citizens Council on the north side of Pittsburgh. I knew it would be a struggle to get here today. I've left the house twice in the last month for work reasons, so I really wanted to be here. I really wanted to help this come over the finish line. It's been in the works for a long time. Back, I think, eight years ago, when I was with the Housing Alliance, we started talking about this with some people that are in the room, and we started researching this. The city's been researching it. I'm just so excited that we're at this moment where it's going to, I believe it'll become a reality. I'm so excited. But I just wanted to reiterate the importance of it. I think we can all agree that neighborhoods shouldn't be like private clubs where you have to have a certain income or race to be included. Imagine what if someone told you you couldn't live in your neighborhood, or your mother, she couldn't live there, or your brother, or your sister, or you couldn't go over there. It's almost like modern redlining income and price, the way that it excludes people and segregates us further. Pittsburgh already has a huge segregation problem in terms of where people live, their race, and their income. We don't want to exacerbate that. We want to fix that. We want to change that. We need to change that. So if we continue to develop the city in an exclusive way, we won't solve anything. We move people who didn't have opportunities to places with less opportunity. Neighborhoods should be places where people from all walks of life, walking, rolling, all walks of life, can share their knowledge, experience, and lives in a way that benefits everyone. It's a proven tool. It's a powerful tool for moving our city forward, not just Lawrenceville, our city. Let this be the pilot. Let us expand into other areas. We've been studying a long time, and we just encourage you to act and look forward to celebrating with you when this becomes a reality. Thank you so much.
Joanna, thank you. I have to bring up, I have two more registered speakers. Carmen Brown, you are next, followed by Randall Taylor. Hi, Carmen, welcome.
I'm here to talk about something else that happened yesterday, and I wanted to address you, Councilman Kraus. I am in favor of the inclusionary zoning, Deb, so just wanted to let you know that. But also, I just wanted to touch base real quick. You know, yesterday, I was real disturbed about what happened when, and Councilman Kraus, I think you were out of line yesterday when you put Randall Taylor out. He was forced out by your, the police, and he done absolutely nothing. All he did was speak about, you know, what happened. And I understand- And I understand that, excuse me?
Carmen, we're here to speak about this bill.
Yeah, I understand that, but I can make a comment.
Carmen, we're here to speak about the bill, and I'm going to ask you to stay on topic about the bill.
Okay, but you don't want to talk about putting a black man out?
I'm going to ask you to stay on topic about the bill, please.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm talking about what happened yesterday. I'm not, I'm not allowed to speak about what happened yesterday?
We're here for a public hearing.
I understand that, but I want to speak about what happened yesterday, Councilman Kraus. Anytime you get a policeman on a black man, okay, you, you, he approached a black man. That's a death threat. And when we were out there, this police officer actually cited, and he asked Randall for his identification. That was wrong. And I'm just saying, it was wrong. It was totally wrong.
Thank you.
And, and, and you interjected, and you were going back and forth with Mr. Taylor. So why did Mr. Taylor get forced out? It was wrong, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to, and, and this is not the end of it.
Okay, thank you. You have. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Taylor, are you here? Mr. Taylor, I'm going to ask you, please, to stay on topic with the bill that we're here to discuss.
Again, my name is Randall Taylor, of East Liberty. I wanted to speak on the public comment side about what occurred yesterday. Will I have an opportunity this afternoon to speak on that issue?
No, but you're welcome. A public comment every Tuesday and Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. Every, every Wednesday, 10:00 a.m., public comment, but we're going to ask you, please, for today to please be on the, the bill. I took you as a courtesy. You were not as registered speakers. It was brought to my attention you claimed that you were registered speakers. As a courtesy, I am taking you as a registered speaker to speak specifically to Bill 1415. Do you have comment for that?
Now, now, there was a speaker earlier who spoke, Dr. Jackie Smith, who spoke about the human rights of housing, and she was allowed to go off-topic. So councilpersons, why am I allowed to speak? I'm a member of the public. Isn't this my time? Isn't this our body? Isn't this our city council? Can I speak on an issue?
Mr. Taylor, we're out for a public comment every Wednesday, every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m.
Councilmembers, can I, am I allowed to speak, or am I going to be silenced again?
Counsel?
This is, this is your place.
Sir, do you have further comment to register on Bill 1415?
I was asking a question.
Freedom of speech. Three minutes. Let him speak.
This is supposed to be our city council. Can I speak, Councilman? Mr. President, can I?
He is speaking. His time is running. His time is running.
Throughout the year, we can't enforce them randomly. That's all I'm saying.
So am I time, can I speak to the audience then?
No, sir. You're here to address council.
Speak to us. Three minutes.
Okay, I mean, I, I wanted to speak. I, I agree. My name is Randall Taylor. I do agree with inclusionary housing.
Councilwoman, may I chair the meeting, please? Your time is running, sir. You're down to a minute and 10 seconds.
Okay, and so council decided I cannot speak about the disrespectful behavior that is, as our president continues to disrespect the public in public comment. You should not silence the public when they come to you to speak. This should be our time to speak on whatever. And what happened yesterday should not have occurred, Councilman Kraus. I didn't do anything wrong. You should not have called the police on me. You should not have banged on the gavel because I was 10 minutes too late. You should not have engaged with me and impugned my integrity by saying it was a political stunt when you initiated everything. So, Councilman Kraus, you don't owe Randall Taylor an apology for your disrespectful and unprofessional behavior towards the public. You deserve, you should apologize to the public for that. People have a right to come here and speak their truths, their opinions, and their beliefs without, without the threat of physical intimidation or physical violence, and that's what you did. We have a right to speak. This is our place, not yours.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, thank you very much. All right. No, thank you very much, Councilwoman, please. Right now, we have State Representative Sarah Inomorado here, and we'd like to bring her to the podium. She wishes to, to register comment on Bill, forgive me, 1415. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Council. I am here on behalf of State Representative Adam Ravenstall and myself in support of this legislation. I am also here as a proud Lawrenceville resident. I live at 5166 Natrona Way, and the concept of home for me is extremely important. When I was a teenager, my mom, my sister, and I had to leave my father, and we moved from place to place, I believe 10 different places in two years. So when I moved to Lawrenceville in a very affordable unit that I rented with a couple coworkers, I found my home. And to me, that was extremely important, to give back to my community, and I became a homeowner about four years ago, buying an alleyway home that I could purchase for about $70,000 on my $30,000-a-year nonprofit salary. That is not a dream that exists for a lot of people who are in the position that I was, and it's one of the main reasons why I ran for office and am proud to represent the 21st District in the State House. And I am fresh from Harrisburg, passing a budget that actually does not work for working people. We cut general assistance. We failed to raise the minimum wage, but what we did, the bright shining spot in our state budget, is that we did increase funding for the Fair Program, which is much like our Housing Opportunity Fund here, by $15 million. To me, yes. To me, that's an acknowledgement that our General Assembly recognizes that there is a housing crisis happening across the Commonwealth. And the fact that I'm standing here today is saying that you have allyship in Harrisburg to tackle these problems. I believe that is my role as an elected official, to be in constant tension with private interests to protect and preserve the public good. This piece of legislation does just that. We heard from experts that this is not a panacea to our housing crisis, but it is one small step forward that we can take together, and then we can continue to partnership, partner, and build, and start to address things like tenant rights, to make sure that we can add more units to our community land trusts, to ensure that we have seniors who can age in place and stay in homes that, where they built all of their social capital. So I'm asking you today, with support from the state representatives of Lawrenceville, to pass Councilwoman Gross's legislation, and so that we can keep Pittsburgh home for everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Okay, that exhausts the list of registered speakers. Anyone who has not registered in advance to speak at the public hearing, you're welcome to come forward. We're going to give each of you one minute. You're welcome to line up. She's not getting in line again. I'm not going to do this. She's getting in line a second time. Okay. Great. All right, so we'll give you just a second for everybody to sort of collect themselves. We're going to bring you up one at a time, and again, you'll be given one minute, but your minute's going to go quickly. We'll need you to begin with your name and the neighborhood in which you reside. Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Felicity Williams, and I am the Programs and Policy Manager at The Hill CDC. I'm Special Assistant to our President and CEO. I want to say I'm so encouraged to be here today, to see so many in support of inclusionary zoning. I'm encouraged by the levels of affordability. However, echoing some comments I've heard earlier, I think we can do more. 10% is the bare minimum. I think that we should, we should challenge ourselves to reach higher levels of affordability, one, and I think we should also revisit the portion of the legislation, the provision that allows for the affordable housing to be built off-site, assuming that it is not feasible. I think that that may lead to segregation along racial and class lines, and so I think that we should really look at revisiting that portion of the legislation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't hear her name. People were talking.
All right, Chris George, Shadyside. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers. We represent over 500 paraprofessionals and technical and clerical employees who have a residency requirement. They need to live in the city. They're concerned, you will hear from somebody in a couple of minutes, that their wages are not keeping up with rent. I think this affects school district employees and city employees. We need to look at that issue. We have about 900 homeless students in the Pittsburgh public schools. They're not going to private schools. They're going to public schools, and in some schools like Faison Elementary, the number is closer to 10% of students are houseless. We know wages, we know the combination of wages and rent have pushed out about 14,000 African-Americans from 2000 to 2015. That's before Penn Plaza. I assume the number's gone up. So I think it's good to get moving. We support this measure. I'm worried it might be a little late in the game, but it's an important proposal to move forward with. There is a good part of it that can lead to more community land trusts. Ultimately, the problem is treating housing as a commodity, where what we need is community land trusts, public housing, social housing, and not just public subsidies for private landlords. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anthony, could you shut the door, please? Thank you very much. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is James Yurick. I'm here on behalf of the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, located at 235 Atwood Street in central Oakland. OPDC is pleased to advocate alongside Lawrenceville United for Equitable Development in the form of inclusionary zoning for affordable housing.
I'm sorry, I'm going to start your time over again. Could we please shut the door, like to be courteous, and hear what they've come to say, okay? I'm going to start your time over. I apologize.
No worries.
Okay? All right, thank you. Please begin.
Yeah, like I said, my name is James Yurick. I'm here on behalf of the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation at 235 Atwood Street in central Oakland. OPDC is pleased to advocate alongside Lawrenceville United for Equitable Development in the form of inclusionary zoning for affordable housing. We are enthusiastically in favor of Council Bill 20191415 to establish iPod 6 in Lawrenceville, and we hope that similar zoning can be brought to Oakland as soon as possible, which is a neighborhood that faces many of the same struggles as Lawrenceville, as we've heard today. To build a, to build a vibrant community in which residents and local businesses thrive all across Pittsburgh, there needs to be room for a diverse mix of renters and homeowners. We urge council to support this bill. Thank you.
Okay, James, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mr. Elkins Dale, and I want to have one comment. I have a few comments. One is it's not about the housing price that you want to reduce it to, but when you do, you're going to have problems with companies coming in, remodeling, building, whatever, because they're out spending, you're talking maybe 300, 400,000 per apartment, and they're never going to get their money back. So that's going to disband in the city, which you're going to end up doing. So I don't know how you're going to do this with keeping companies from making money. You're going to lose property sales. Property's going to go down, and that's going to be one of the problems. Like, I live in Lawrenceville. I own a house. My mother died and left me that house. If I'd sell today, it'd have to be for 260,000, because I couldn't afford to move nowhere else and remodel a house and live in a nice place. And this is one of the problems going to hurt the issue, and that's something you're going to have to figure out. And I'm telling you, I think your best alternative is make a Commonwealth law where people's going to have to be making enough money they can afford to pay their bills, because just, just going to get Harrisburg, and they're telling you, you know, every time you go to raise the minimum wage, is a bunch of crap, because they're never going to be able to pay a bill and own anything.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Because if you put a freeze on it now, you're going to have problems with companies wanting to sue for their money to get out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Marx. I am a paraeducator, working in Arsenal, 6 through 8, in the neighborhood of Lawrenceville, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gross for this inclusion zoning initiative. I am here for two reasons. The families of the children that I serve, and for my colleagues who work very, very hard. Within the past year, I've watched students in our, in our school just suddenly disappear because their parents have lost their homes, because they were evicted. I work with children who suffer from trauma, and that being homeless is a great, great trauma. I also work with colleagues.
It goes very quickly. Thanks, Brenda. Thanks for being here. Okay? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Marcia Baddies, and I'm from Squirrel Hill. And a couple of things here. First, I fully support the inclusionary zoning. My first request would be that you initiate some type of a plan to look at all of the neighborhoods and the public housing needs that they are going to need, or the affordable housing that they're going to need over the next five, 10 years, because a lot of these locations, these neighborhoods are already being viewed. Those that are along the T and other places, and they're already starting to be bought up, they need a plan now so that they're not into the gentrification situation that Lawrenceville is. The second reason I'm here is that we're not going to build our way out of that, and as a couple of other people have managed, have mentioned, what we really need is we need a living wage in Pittsburgh. And I recognize that Pittsburgh is shackled by being a Class II city, and that is what I'm asking you to tackle. I'm looking to you for your creativity or tenacity to identify the steps needed to get control of our corporate salaries and pursue these changes as if the future of our city depends upon it, because it does. We are not going to be able to build our way out of this. It's just going to get worse. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia. Thank you. Hi.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Rose, and I'm here on behalf of Contemporary Craft. Currently, we're located in the Strip District, but soon, our future home will be in Lawrenceville. And I'm here to say that we are for inclusive or inclusionary housing. We are a nonprofit dedicated to building and supporting an inclusive community and, through art, so affordable housing is an issue of great importance to us. We ask that you vote in favor for inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Carol Hardeman. I'm with the Hill District Consensus Group. I'm a longtime Hill District resident, and I, I'm glad that you're, or I hope you're in favor of inclusionary zoning. Also, I want to say, when you consider the tools or the substance or the ingredients that goes in with inclusionary zoning, please consider fair housing, because everyone's talking about affordable housing. Affordable housing for who? It's called fair housing. How did that law into effect back in the '60s, and no one wants to get it, and I'm praying that city council will get it? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome.
Hi there. My name's Catherine Shane. I live in the 4,800 block of Hatfield Street in the 10th Ward, 9th Ward, sorry. I've lived in the 6th and 10th Ward as well. Been in Lawrenceville since 2008. So over the past 11 years, I, I've observed the cost of owning or renting a home in Lawrenceville rise, and it's only accelerating. And I've observed the demographic shifts that a lot of the speakers today have described. The new developments appear to be providing a surplus of what I would call luxury housing at a price point that is only available to a very small segment of the population. So I'm in favor of inclusionary zoning because it represents a deliberate step towards better supporting the ability of our current residents to stay in the neighborhood, and so that newcomers to Lawrenceville, which I, I'm in favor of growth and development, but we want the newcomers to be better able, or to the neighborhood to be better able to maintain diversity in socioeconomic and racial variety of the neighborhood that we love. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Catherine. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Matt Galuso. I'm the Executive Director of the Lawrenceville Corporation and co-director of the City of Bridges Community Land Trust. For the past nine years, I've led an organization charged with serving as the catalyst and conduit for responsible growth in our neighborhood. There's a palpable desire, as you can tell, for our constituents to create balance. This has been reflected in our community planning, the Upper Lawrenceville Plan, which called for housing for all. It is reflected in our implementation through the Community Land Trust. It is also reflected in our work to create affordable rental developments in our neighborhood. Through Action Housing's partnership, we're doing 35 units in Doughboy Square. Inclusionary zoning will not be the panacea for all our housing goals, but it will augment these, these recent efforts, including our advocacy. Support for inclusionary housing is not just about actually housing. It's also a strategy to support a larger ecosystem. For example, businesses need to access workforce. Yet workforce housing for our businesses, both large and small, this necessary part of that ecosystem is quickly disappearing. That's a problem that IZ can be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. Okay. So, last call. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address City Council at this public hearing? Okay, seeing no further speakers, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. I'm going to open it up to members for comment, and I'm going to begin with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to make this brief, I really appreciate everyone's time who came down here today. It's so important, and your, your comments were so eloquent. I always like to repeat, it's so important for members to hear directly from your voice, right? I'm proud to represent you and relay and report back, but it's really meaningful to hear your stories directly. So thank you to the members for being here, and thank you to the, to all of the testimony that we heard. I've said before, and I'll just summarize it a little bit for members, at the Planning Commission hearing especially, I emphasized that this is really, for me, a manifestation, us being able to enable in law Lawrenceville's own plan for itself. This conversation has been happening in Lawrenceville on street corners and living rooms and in the community organizations for years now. It's literally written into the written plans that they did themselves. And so instead of just being empty words on paper, we have the power to put those wishes into law. And so that is why I'm happy to shepherd this legislation through, and I want to thank the City Planning Department for also doing so much work on it and doing all of the work with the community members and everyone showing up for it now. Dozens, it feels like, meetings, dozens and dozens of meetings. And then also, I do think this is the rightful place for government to take action. We have, for very long in the city, honed our tools and sharpened our tools and honed our skills at working on concentrated poverty, on blight, and on disinvestment. And, but the other end of the free market spectrum is also the rightful place for government to take action. Concentrated wealth, hyper-investment, and gentrification are the opposite end of the spectrum, and I think it's the rightful place, especially when we're so clearly supporting the wishes of the citizens. Zoning is the right place to take action, and I think this is a policy that will help manifest Lawrenceville's own vision for itself. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Other members wish to register comment?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Gross, because she has worked on this for a very long time, and she's very in tune with her constituents, so I want to thank her for this, for her work on here, and fully supportive of what she wants to have happen in her district, because she does know her district. I don't know if this is right for the entire city, as I mentioned, our area begs for development, begs for some attention, and just trying to get some, but it seems like once it starts happening, it snowballs so quickly. So I think that's where, you know, the challenge is, is finding that balance. So we're not, we've learned from some of the things that have happened in the East End. We want to see some things happen in our area, but not quite to the extent it's happened in your neighborhoods, even though it's a fantastic neighborhood. I just want to applaud to Councilwoman Gross for her, for her work on this, and getting all of us to understand her side of this. And I also want to, I just want to say, I didn't mean any disrespect before when I said, made the comment about the, to Councilwoman Kraus about Mr. Taylor speaking. I just, I know that it's very difficult to chair these meetings, and I just, I don't want to see the, we do have rules of council, and I do think they need enforced, but I think they can't be enforced randomly. And so I just was trying to throw, because sometimes when you're near that position of chairing, it's not so easy to gain your composure sometime. So I just want to make sure that I made that comment clear. But I do want to thank you all for coming down today and sharing, sharing your stories. I heard some of it in the back, and I've heard, you know, most of it here, so thank you very much for your comments. Fully supportive.
Yeah. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. I also want to congratulate Councilwoman Gross, and thank you all here today for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here and making your voices heard, and all of the organizations that have been working on this for two years plus. I'm fully supportive of this legislation as well. And I'm watching it closely for my neighborhoods as well. Because the honest truth is, the neighborhoods, many of the neighborhoods that I represent have been out of reach for a lot of people for a long time. And, you know, as we were talking, as Councilwoman Gross is talking about concentrated poverty, well, concentrated wealth is not healthy for a city or a neighborhood either. We, we heard a lot today, we need diverse communities, right? And it's not just ethnic and racial diversity, we need economic diversity in our neighborhoods. As I think it was Ms. Milander said, we want children of different backgrounds growing up together. Lord knows, in this day and age, with the political rhetoric at the national level, we need more of that. So, and think about what diverse communities can do for our schools as well, our public schools. So I'm watching this very closely. I agree that not every piece of legislation, not every policy aimed at increasing affordable housing and equity in housing can fit in every single neighborhood all at the same time. We need to approach this with a scalpel and not an ice pick. But I'm watching this closely to see if we can apply it in some way or another, in addition to other policies, to the neighborhoods that I represent down the line. Because I think eventually, we will need this and other policies, to apply it as broadly as possible. So thank you for your work, we're going to benefit from all of the work that you've done today.
Yep, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilman?
I just wanted to add quickly, as Councilwoman Kail Smith said, my neighborhood doesn't have a lot of development, and, you know, it's really not an issue there, but I want to compliment Councilwoman Gross and her efforts and what she has done with this bill, and with the passion that you all show, it makes it easy for me to support. You know, I don't know if it's right for my district, but it certainly is for, you know, Council District 7, and possibly yours as well, but I'm in full support.
So I'd like to tell a story, and I hope it makes sense, but many of you know I live in the South Side, and many of you know the history of development that's taken place in the South Side, and how a neighborhood can change over a couple decades. And so much of what I heard today was the same sort of fight that brought me here to counsel, that I was fighting 20 years ago. And it was to protect the integrity and the sweat equity of generations of homesteaders that made that piece of real estate ripe for development. And then when development came in, in the beginning, it's a good thing. But then too much of a good thing turns into maybe not such a good thing, right? And then what you see is change and displacement. And this place that we've known for generations, that we have loved because of that inherent integrity, you know, the diversity of that sort of hodgepodge of people, really became homogenized, and it changed in ways that we didn't want to see. I remember one Saturday night, I was, I had to do laundry desperately. But my laundry, the faucet in my laundry tub was broken, and I had fixed it, put a new faucet in, but I needed a wrench just to make one more turn, and if I could do that, I'd have my laundry back, and I could spend Sunday doing laundry. And for the life of me, I could not find the wrench that I needed. And I thought, well, I'll just borrow it, like, how difficult would that be? And I walked out the front door, and it dawned on me, I didn't know anybody to borrow the wrench from. That Nick was gone, and Dorothy was gone, and Mary Floikowski was gone, and Mrs. Doyle was gone, and Mike was gone. And it dawned on me, for the first time, it was tangible, just how much things had changed, and how important it is to preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods, right? And to protect those generations of people whose sweat equity made that piece of real estate ripe for development, right? So it's not move over, it's welcome, right? How can we live together and live collectively, right? Isn't that the story? So with that, of course, we're going to support the Councilwoman's initiatives here. We thank you for your effort, you're who led the charge on this. We simply responded to you and the things that you want to see happen in your neighborhood. So we're happy to help and support. I personally want to thank you, too, for coming down, spending your afternoon with us. I think this is truly my favorite thing that we get to do, is to host public hearing and hear directly from you. This is, as was said earlier, this is your chamber.
Not mine, I like going out in the community.
But this is your chamber, and, and we're here in response to you. So thank you very much. With that, my pleasure, thank you. We are going to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, in a second? Okay, we're adjourned.